I'd like to call this meeting to order. We appreciate everyone that's in attendance. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Michael Mathis from Mission Field Ministries to lead us in our invocation, and it will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Oh, Lord God of the universe, we thank you and acknowledge your sovereignty. We're grateful for your presence here this evening. We're also thankful, Lord, that you declare that though our sins be a scarlet, that you wash us white as snow. And so thanking us, thank you, Lord, for having us in a place now spiritually with you, that you are pleased with the business that will be carried out tonight. Oh, Lord, as the town of Hope Mills continues to grow, we shall not fail in acknowledging your hand in the affairs and all the business matters that take place to help Hope Mills continue to grow and be a place of peace. Lord, we thank you for what you've already done and how so many things that happen in other cities and towns. Our town of Hope Mills is safe, not perfect, but safe. And we thank you. We thank you, God, for our first responders and all those that put their lives in harm's way to protect. We thank you, God, for putting a hedge of protection around every resident here in this town. Oh, Lord, we thank you for the fire department, just everyone. We're especially grateful, Lord, for the leadership of Mayor Jackie Warner. Oh, Lord, and how you continue to keep a hedge of protection around her. We ask that you would continue to touch her body, oh, Lord, and keep her well. We speak peace, God, to her mind, understanding that it's a difficult task to lead a town or a city. And we thank you for her, God. We thank you for keeping the enemy at bay, oh, Lord, that she might lead with a degree of peace. We thank you not only for her, but the rest of the board members, God, that so willingly sacrificed their time to assist her and do things and pass things that would be in the best interest of this town. We're just so grateful, God, for your provision and the funds that are allocated to do things here in this town, oh, Lord. And now, there's an agenda, and, God, we ask that you would touch it with your finger of approval. Help us, God, to be respectful. Help us, Lord, to continue to acknowledge your hand in matters that sometimes we don't understand. We just continue to put everything into your hands. We're looking forward, even now, for a better year in 2024. And thanking you so much for all the favorable things and good things that you have brought to pass in our town here of Hope Mills during the year of 2023. We'll put it all into your hands now, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item A under Old Business.
Okay. Okay, we're removing item A under Old Business.
And just to clarify where we are on that item, since it's being removed, we're still in discussion with the DOT on their position on parking on that street. So we're waiting to hear on that.
Okay. So for the audience, item A under Old Business's discussion of no parking ordinance, and that was in reference to a no parking ordinance that would affect the whole town, but primarily looking at an ordinance in reference to Goffview Road. And that's being removed as they're waiting to get the, all the legal stuff together. Is there anything else that we need to remove or anything to add?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, sign if I raise your right hand. Seeing none opposed. At this time, we have official comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Ling.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good to see everyone out this evening. It was very interesting to hear all the ball teams calling signals as I was walking in the back door. Takes me back a few years, but I'm not back there. I'm here. So, but I have nothing other than that to say. Thank you for...
You're welcome. Commissioner Mitchell?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Hope we have a very informative and productive meeting. And I also want to thank everyone that came out and supported the VFW and the Kiwanis with our barbecue cell. The funds that we raised is going to be beneficial to our kids and all the high schools inside of our area. So again, thank you all so very much for your generous support.
May I approach him?
I don't have anything. Just good to see everyone tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Scorola?
It's good to see people consistently coming to our meetings. It's always good to see some faces in the crowd. That's all I have. Good to see everyone.
Hey, Commissioner Marley?
No, ma'am. I don't have anything this time.
What I have at this time is a special proclamation that I believe is not only very important to our community, but it's important in the whole United States. And it's something that has impacted our community more recently than probably some of you are even aware. It was brought to my attention, the number of females that have breast cancer in Hope Mills or around Hope Mills. And those that most recently have had, after being declared a survivor, had to go back. And we have one especially within my church that is now had to have additional surgery. So this is something that Susan G. Coleman, she was a member of the Zeta Sorority at NC State, and she started a fundraiser. And this has been, it's gone nationwide. But what has happened is they declared October as Breast Cancer Month. There are other cancers, there are other colors that are used for the ribbons, but this is the month that's been designated. So there's a special proclamation I'd like to read at this time. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women about the importance of early detection of breast cancer, whereas four out of 10 North Carolina citizens will be affected by cancer in their lifetime. Whereas since National Breast Cancer Awareness Month inception, mammography use was doubled and breast cancer death rates have declined. However, many women still do not utilize mammography at regular intervals. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Hope Mills, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the town of Hope Mills, and encourage the citizens of Hope Mills and all women and their families in the community to get the facts about mammography and join in supporting our fellow citizens who are faced with battling breast cancer. And I appreciate your patience with that. And also just know that it's very important to me because I have several friends and family members that have gone through, thankfully, they're all survivors right now. At this time, we have presentations. And the first presentation I have will be a special proclamation. And I will ask Mayor Protem if she will present this, while I read the certificate, should she present this to our fire department? And this is Fire Prevention Week proclamation. Whereas every year, fire prevention is observed during the week of October the 9th in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire that occurred in 1871. This fire killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, destroyed more than 17,400 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres of land. Whereas the goal of Fire Prevention Week is to raise awareness about the dangers of fire and spread knowledge about fire safety to reduce the number of fire-related deaths and injuries. Whereas the Hope Mills Fire Department is joining the National Fire Protection Association in outreach to its citizens with a message of fire safety during Fire Prevention Week 2023. Whereas the Fire Prevention Week 2023 theme is Cooking Safely Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. And it works to educate everyone about simple but important actions that they can take to keep themselves and those around them safe from home fires. Whereas cooking is the leading cause of many home fires, with nearly half, 49% of all home fires involving cooking equipment. Cooking is also the leading cause of home fire injuries. Unattended cooking is the leading cause of home cooking fires and related deaths. Whereas the Hope Mills Fire Department is joined by other departments of the town of Hope Mills, as well as other emergency service providers and safety advocates, businesses, schools, service organizations, and clubs in their fire safety efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, mayor of the town of Hope Mills, to hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through 14th as Fire Prevention Week, and the town encourage all its citizens to remember this year's theme, Cooking Safely Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. And at this time, I'd also like, for those that don't know, this is our new fire chief, Chief Steve Lopez. And so this is a good opportunity to recognize him too and our fire department for all they do. Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is Presentation Regarding Old North State League Proposal to Relocate the Hope Mills and Possible Action. And I'll turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Lamarcus Morrison.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Before Mr. Allred and his team comes up, there's a couple of reminders I'd like to give the board and talk about the purpose of why Mr. Allred and I think, I think they're calling their organization Ballred Organization is here tonight. If you would recall, back in September 19, 2022, the team presented at that time and the board directed staff to meet with the Old North State League and consult with them and come up with a better proposal. And so that's basically what tonight is. So that's the reason for bringing back the proposal again. A couple of differences I want to point out. Last year, the ask was for the town to invest $150,000 on the ball fields and then agreed to a 15-year lease where the league would pay us back. And we didn't have the budget for that, so that was not approved. The difference this year is that the league is actually investing $100,000 for the renovation and upgrade to our ball field. So that's, that's the big difference. And Mr. Allred, to talk a little bit more about that in agreement, that you all should have a copy of in your possession now that talks about the, the details of the lease agreement. I would like to say that, you know, part of what we're asking for the board to approve is for the town manager to negotiate the terms of this. So nothing you have there is ironclad or in stone. It's a negotiating tool. And a lot of the language is up for negotiation. So I just want to point that out. We did take the proposal to the Parks and Recreation Board on September the 25th and discussed it with them and told them that we would be bringing it to the board as an agenda item. If they were in agreement or supportive, and the support was unanimous. I got the chairman, Mr. Hesse is here tonight to vouch for that. And of course, Dr. McCray was there. It was on the agenda. We did discuss it, not at length, but we discussed the terms of it and the major points about the investment in the fields, et cetera. And so if you go through the proposal, there is a provision there for input from the citizens and the youth athletic league. Mr. Allred will talk about it, but there is, there is a chance for the town and its citizens and the youth athletic league to have a say-so in the new naming of the team. And so there will be public input if we do indeed move forward with the agreement. And again, their proposal does not require any monetary investment from the town. They're actually investing $100,000 to the upgrade of, of the fields. So with that, I'll let Mr. Allred come up and talk about the, the proposal and answer any questions you all may have about the agreement.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak again. Since I was here last year, a lot has changed. We've grown from 13 teams to 17 teams. But the one thing that hasn't changed is our desire to bring a team to Hope Mills, so much so that now we're willing to invest the money. We've expanded to eastern North Carolina, long-term agreements with Jacksonville, Elizabeth City, New Bern, and so on. And our push east is very important to our desire to move the Fayetteville team to Hope Mills. As I said last year, our commitment and our input into the community and how we want this team to be activated is through community support and getting the team involved with the youth. We want the town to be involved in the naming process. We want the citizens to have a say. We want the youth teams and the Parks and Rec teams to be involved with the team and run out with the team on game days. And so what we would like to do is propose to, to invest $100,000 into the facility to bring it up to college baseball standards and give us a proper field to play on and bring a, bring a college summer baseball team to Hope Mills.
Question? Yes?
I have some questions. When did we receive this agreement? When did, when did the town receive?
I think Mr. Morrison can speak to when we received the agreement, but we put it in your chairs for discussion this evening.
Yes, but when did we, when did the town receive? We received the agreement in August. So I'm, I'm trying to review this.
Turn your microphone on.
So basically, in the 10 minutes since we got this, I'm trying to review it when you guys had it since August.
Well, I'll speak to that. Taking it through the proper process, when we got it in August, it was to go to Parks and Rec Craig Varone Committee in September. And so ultimately, you're getting it tonight with a recommendation of town staff after it has gone through that process.
But still, I'm supposed to make a decision. This is a decision that affects the town, and I have 10 minutes to review it. Now granted, I've read through it fairly quickly, but we got to do better than that.
And not answer that. So typically, and if you will follow me through all the agreements I've always submitted, I've never submitted a contract because it's a negotiation. And so that was the reason for it. It wasn't, it wasn't purposeful. It wasn't until I was asked or I saw something about the agreement not being the packet. But, you know, it was always our intent to give you the dollar amount and, and, and the, the general specifics of it. But the terms of it were, were, was a negotiation thing. Typically, we don't bring a contract to the board until it's been negotiated in a dollar amount. So that was the reason for it.
Just take it as a learning lesson.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all, I want to read something a little bit quicker than 10 minutes before the meeting. But I do have some other questions.
Okay.
So I'm reading through this, and I see just a couple of things that concern me. Now, do you currently have a team here locally in Cumberland County?
The league does, yes.
Where is it located?
At JP Real Estate in Fayetteville.
Why is it not staying there?
Because we want to get the team out of Fayetteville. So in minor league baseball and college summer baseball, most teams, and you would see it in there as well, have a non-compete with a team that could be considered competition. So we can have no public support from the city of Fayetteville. So this...
Because of the Woodpeckers?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Now, I see also that...
I mean, that's not the only reason. Also because...
I, I, yeah.
There is, where we've been successful hasn't always been the biggest city. It's, it's the communities outside of the bigger cities themselves. And so, for example, like our most successful team in the league probably right now is in the Southern Pines area. It's not in Aberdeen, but it's, it's outside of there, closer to the Whispering Pines, Southern Pines area. So that's kind of where we've found our, our bread and butter. Same thing with, we have a team in Clayton. They're very successful. And they're just a suburb of Raleigh, pretty much. So...
Okay. Now, I see that you plan on investing $100,000, but you get to retain the concession stand revenue, advertising revenue, gate revenue. So the town, so you, so the 100, the 100,000 essentially goes to the upgrade for the town, for the ball field. And then it also says that if we build the ball fields on the other location, that you guys reserve the right to move to that location. And then if there's any additional improvements, that adds additional time to the contract. Is that what I'm reading? Is that correct?
Well, so I'll try to take each one of those. And if I forget one of them, just feel free to step in. So in terms of the revenue in advertising, gate sales, and concessions, that would be correct because that's how we can rationalize spending $100,000 into a property that we'll never own. We have to return on it somehow. Still, although this is a, a thing that we've done all across the state to, for communities and a community involvement thing, it's still a business. And we still want to make money. And we still have to make sure that we hit our numbers to be able to continue to function. So that's the first point. And it's just during that period of time as well, in, in the summer months. Second point about moving to the future stadium. What the purpose of that was is almost as a non-compete. Because if not, there could be somebody that comes in and undercuts us, moves into a better stadium. And basically, we helped get the community around the Woodbat baseball team, and the competition of ours just sweeps in and takes control of what we've built over the last few years or whatnot. So that's more so that. And then the final point, I think, was about additional renovations. If I'm not mistaken, it has to be, there's a part in there that has to be approved for those renovations to add time to the lease.
Okay. Then I had also, so I've, I've been doing a little bit of research on this one. I seen it come up on the agenda. Now, for New Bern, because you just did one with New Bern, a contract with New Bern in August, and they're getting 250,000 and also getting to lease the field for a dollar a year for 10 years. We're poorer than New Bern, and yet we're only getting $100,000.
So there's two, two reasons for that. Number one, not, not every team, there's a lot of different owners in the league. I mean, there's ownership groups in Texas, New Jersey, all over. So the ownership group in New Bern's not the ownership group here. So everybody has access to different amounts of money. The other point is, is they're investing more money, but they're getting year-round control. They're getting complete control of that field for the next 10 years.
Well, the way this sounds is essentially that's what you guys get. Because other than the naming rights for the team, any advertisement, we can't put town, town advertisements on any of the signs. What else does it say here? You, um, where was it? I tried to mark it off as I went. The town also will pay for the utilities for here. So it seems like, you know, yes, you're putting $100,000 into it, but that's still a lot that we don't get from this. That answers all my questions.
Okay. And just one comment I have, I think we stated that at the very beginning. This is not the final agreement. This is negotiation paper. So that this will be used to negotiate the final agreement that you'll bring back to the board once it's a final agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think he's speaking also that this only applies to the three-month season that you guys have. And so this does not apply to concessions for any other games that we have. This only applies for the duration of time of their season, which is three months.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
Madam Mayor, I, I too, looked at the contract, and I do have concerns about the language exclusive. And, and then I rolled it down from exclusive to the end, and it says, and other revenues generated as a result of any activity. See, that is broad language. Exclusive and "any" is broad language. And I would not sign that on any contract unless it's to my advantage. I'm being honest with you. I just want. And I won't agree to sign anything for this town that has language in it like that. We have to negotiate that piece. We got to figure out a way to make that a little more user-friendly for this town. The other thing that I'm having, I think I have a little bit concerned about is says, Hope Mills consent to and will take all reasonable steps to assist in obtaining one or more permits to sell, like all the beverages, on the leased property during an activity. That right there, too, can prove to be somewhat challenging. So we got to go back and revisit some of this language in here. And we need to make sure that the Ts across and the Is are dotted. And definitely, we need our attorney to go through the fine-tooth comb if we proceed with it to make sure that Hope Mills do be on the positive side. In 10 years, I'm not a fan of any contracts, 10 years unless it's to my advantage. It's just the nature of the beast. And that's the business world. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Could I, could I respond real quick to a couple of those points? So the first, the first part about the language of the exclusivity or whatnot, basically, you're right, that's broad. We can, we can negotiate, or we can figure out how to write that up and clean it up. What it, what the purpose of it is for is so that throughout the course of that three-month period, we can do other events on the field to bring the community into the team. So it's, it's a broad statement because it might be a kickball tournament with the kids, or it might be a camp, or it might be stuff like that. So we can, that's, I wouldn't want that to be the reason why. The second part about the permits, what that should read as, or we can change it, and we can get our attorneys to do that, is that we have permission to apply for a permit. That, that's really what that means. We, we get permits, and we have permission from city councils across the state to sell beer on their property if we, if my group receives the proper permits, or the ownership group receives the proper permits. It wouldn't necessarily be the city getting a permit. It would be giving us permission to get the permits. Then we have to get the fire, fire chief and police chief to come inspect the property for a on-premise or off-premise retail permit. And then the 10-year contract, I understand that. You know, I'm going to ask for that because it's, it is a lot of money, $100,000 is a lot of money. So we got to just try to have as long as we can to return on it. And that's, that's really what that is. Plus, I mean, generally speaking, beyond just putting $100,000 in the field, we put a lot of money into our staff and a lot of money into merchandise and marketing the team and whatnot. And if we're going to be here, I kind of want, if, if this is going to happen, I want to know that we can keep the team here for a long time. So...
And I will, Madam Mayor, I will say this. Now, I have been part of an event where in three weeks, we made over $150,000 for the events that we had during that timeframe in three weeks. Three weeks. So it's not impossible for it to happen, is it?
It's not impossible. I'd like to know who, who held, held there.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
This, this is actually, I don't know if it would go towards maybe the attorney or maybe you to answer. Where it talks about the meeting of parties, Ballred and Hope Mills agreed to meet at least two times per year for jointly review, usage, and maintenance schedules and the requirement for amendments to this agreement. Does that mean, like, will staff discuss that kind of amendments, or does it come back to the board?
Any, any material amendment to the contract would come back before the board. If it's just a scheduling issue, it'd probably be something handled by, by staff. And just to clarify where we are here, we have not reviewed this contract for, you know, legal sufficiency and, and all that stuff. So all of the points that y'all are making about the contract are things we would address. This is just, do you want us to proceed and, and have negotiation? Is there interest in, in going down this path, kind of thing?
And I will add that, and under all circumstances, any discussions about changes to, if it's a material change that hasn't come to the board, that's obvious. But if there's something that happens at staff level, we still will keep the board updated and informed about all aspects of the conversation we're having.
Okay. Commissioner Marley, do you have any questions or any concerns? Mayor Protem Mitchell?
The Chair of the Hope Mills Youth Association is here. Is there any way that we can have him speak?
Sure.
McDonald?
Marquez? No, Youth Association, I'm sorry. Marquez is Parks and Rec Youth Association. I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald.
Yes, ma'am. And your question?
Just what you thought about this potential partnership.
Mayor, can we get into Stady's name and...
Brian McDonald, President of the Hope Mills Youth Association. And currently, it is our position at the Youth Association that any positive role models to help promote our children to the next level in sports, just in being a grown man, is always a plus. I do know that there is some financial stuff that's still in negotiation. I'm not going to get into any parts of that, but at this point, it would tickle so many five- and six-year-olds to run out on the field with college-aged children playing baseball that I am all for at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all.
Want to say one other thing. When I got this contract, I did a little research myself, and I just decided, I said, you know what, I'm going to read this. In the early 1900s, every rural town in the state had a town team, and it was made up of the mill workers. NC is known for having some of the best college baseball teams in the country. And the goal is for the league to have teams in every corner of the state. And I agree. If that's the direction you want to go in, and I agree with the youth. I agree 100%. Anything that we can do to help improve and reduce and control the direction our youth is going in, put a pot of spin on it, is a benefit to any and every community. is a benefit to any and every community in this nation. And I support that a hundred percent.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner Lee?
Thank you for being here this evening. Um. I've been a Parks and Rec guy for forty-some years. And I, I kind of keep an eye out to make sure that things coming in doesn't hurt things that we have already. For instance, our softball and baseball program, our wrestling program, our basketball program. Um, I think Maxie gets kind of irritated at me sometimes because I'm always asking him how this is going to benefit us. First question I have, where would these teams be staying that are coming into town to play if they're from out of town?
Yeah, so the way that, the way that we do our schedules is kind of, I mean, it's the vision of the league is to expand to every corner. So most of the teams don't stay overnight. Now, families will that come and watch from a visiting team or whatnot. But the teams won't because they might be from an hour and a half away. Uh, their, their fans will travel. So what we've tried to do is establish community rivalries with Hope Mills and, and Sandhills. You know, like those local areas where Hope Mills fans are going to Sandhills to watch a game and vice versa. Um, so the teams don't necessarily really stay, um, overnight. Like if a team, the team from Hendersonville came to Hope Mills for a, for a non-league game, of course, they probably would, would stay in some hotels. Uh, but really, from an economic impact standpoint, it's really the families of the players that are living here because a lot of the players might not be from, from this area. They might be from another state. And, and then the fans, um, of the visiting teams. And then the players themselves, honestly, I mean, you think about having thirty-five college-aged boys eating out for sixty days during the summer and spending money in the gas station. The buses filling up in the gas stations after they leave here every night. Um, so.
That's what we're interested in. Go ahead, sir. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, I mean, that, that was pretty much it.
Uh, I know there's a lot of times we travel. I know Mr. McDonald's traveled and Maxie's traveled. Miss Beth back there has traveled. I have traveled. Mr. Marley has traveled. We all pay our, and Mayor Warner's traveled. And we all have paid our, our share to help the other cities in the state. And that's where we're at right now. Uh. I don't want to enter into anything that's going to take anything away from any of our programs, from basketball to football to cheerleading to baseball, softball. But I've, I'm on the borderline of, of what to think about this. I know we've had it before and, uh, we had some problems with it. So what are the other advantages that you have this time around that you did not have the last time that you were here?
I think that just stability of the league and the growth of the league from thirteen to seventeen teams has, is a big thing. I mean, the league is the biggest, it's the second biggest league in the entire country now. Um, so we're, we're, we've gone from a hundred players six years ago to six hundred players this upcoming year. In one town six years ago, ten, twenty. So the stability and the growth of the league and developing those community rivalries, impacting more communities and kids and stuff. I, I would say that's the, the thing that's changed. The mission and the goals really haven't changed. Is to bring college summer baseball to every corner of the state and impact kids and have, um, kids see their heroes out on the field. I had an opportunity to play professional baseball and I promised the reason was because my cousin did. I got to see him when I was a young kid play professional baseball and I wanted to be him. Um, and I think that a, a lot of these communities, minor league baseball continues to get smaller and it will continue to get smaller. Um, a lot of these communities don't have, the kids don't have college and professional athletes to look up to that they can interact with on a daily basis. And so that's, that's our opportunity.
Let me ask you this, if I may. Will there be any charges for our children to get in to watch these games?
Uh, I believe depending on the ownership group, most ownership groups, like twelve and under are free.
That means you got to pay.
What?
Okay. Yes, me again. Um, when you guys were, uh, playing at JP Riddle, about how many Inted and Ds were you getting each game?
Um, not many, two or three hundred.
Two or three hundred?
Couple of reasons that I would, I would say for that. Number one, we couldn't play on the weekends. They had to be Monday or Tuesday games. We couldn't use the concession stand because the college was worried about liability for some reason. We have partnerships with like four other community colleges. They, they have some concerns that no other community college in North Carolina that we work with has concerns over. Uh, so we couldn't use concession stands. So it was always kind of a makeshift concession stand slash food truck. Um, so the food and beverage options were limited. Um, with them being a community college previous to about, probably two weeks ago, you couldn't sell beer on community college sporting events. I think that's about the past. Actually, it was added to the ABC Omnibus Bill. Um, so there's a lot of things working against. So when I compare what I think Hope Mills could be to, it'd probably be like a, an Elizabeth City-type atmosphere where they have five hundred to a thousand fans every night. Um, and they, they're, we entered into agreement, one of the ownership groups did last year with Elizabeth City. And they're building a stadium now because they can't hold the crowds that they had this past summer. Um, so the one thing that I do not know how to, to quantify is no city that we work with has as large of a Parks and Rec department in terms of a youth baseball program as Hope Mills, which is absolutely awesome. That's incredible. So I, there's no telling because the kids are our biggest fans and, and the kids bring the parents and they bring their friends. And so there's really, I couldn't tell you how many fans. If there's six hundred fall, uh, kids playing fall baseball right now and there's nine hundred in the spring, if two hundred of those come out at night, you're talking about a thousand people probably.
Are you not concerned about still, even though it's Hope Mills compared to Fayetteville, the close proximity because of the Woodpeckers?
I'm not. And the reason for that is we're in other areas where there's a minor league team pretty close. And this, and this is my opinion, but communities like Hope Mills, the citizens get drawn to this being their team. They're not, the Woodpeckers are not their team. They live in the town of Hope Mills. This is Hope Mills' team. They're going to name the team. The citizens will name the team. They will probably know players that have played at, uh, Jack Britt and Grace Creek and that play on the team or, you know, in the future at least. So, um, that's what I would say to that.
That's my last question.
And as a comparison for me, um, when it wasn't Fayette Tech's field, when it was the Swamp Dogs' field, the opening night of the Woodpeckers, there were three thousand people at Legion Field. And that was the opening night. So as far as, and numbers-wise, they always had numbers there. When Fayette Tech took over, and I understand how difficult it'd be because they have their own baseball program. Um, but one thing I thought was important with, when we had the Swamp Dogs here, was that they also had host families, that some of the college kids that were on their team would stay within those host families. So then they had another opportunity to interact with the community.
Yeah.
And I, I've seen several families that, you know, actually missed that because they had children that played ball. And here they had a baseball player that spent the summer with them. So is that something y'all do too, as far as if they're not from this area?
Yeah, yeah, well, every team that we have, this wouldn't be possible without host families. So every team we have utilizes host families. One thing that we have done on the league side is we've encouraged all ownership groups to have very, like, local rosters, college baseball players that, you know, grew up in, in the Cumberland County area, Hope County area, and they've gone off to play. They might not even be playing in, in a North Carolina university, but they come home for the summer. So we encourage them to get a lot of local players because that really brings the community out because they've watched those guys play since they were in Little League and middle school and high school. But it never fails, you know, twenty to thirty, forty percent of the players are going to be out-of-state guys and they have to have host families. So most hosts, most teams have a, a host family pool of ten to twenty host families. Um, and, and we rely on those.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Ma'am, um, I'm not sure whether to question or not. Are we going to be asked to financially distribute money to this group? Or have you guys got all that covered?
No, yeah, there's no financial contribution from the city to do this. Uh, from a, we're not asking for money.
I know that people like Mr. Dove and Mr. McDonald, Ms. Searns and myself, and probably others in this room that have worked hard. I just spent forty-two years with the Youth Association, Youth Association across the street. And I would hate to see everything go backwards from where they have it to now. Under Mr. McDonald's leadership, we had sent several teams to the state this year. None won, but, uh, we were there. And I think that our local teams seem to carry their own weight no matter where they go. And that's because of the attention we give them, either by stuff through Parks and Recreation or stuff from the Youth Association. Uh, forty-two years is a lot of time to spend with a, a group of six-year-olds, I'll say it that way. So, um.
I will jump in there real quick, if you don't mind. Um.
Yes, sir, I don't.
One thing that, that I feel like that we, we have an opportunity to do is, is actually grow, um, the game of baseball. Beyond being a good influence on kids in the community, I feel like we can grow it. And what I mean by that is I feel like of the three major, uh, professional sports, NBA, NFL, MLB, Major League Baseball's done the exact opposite thing of grow the baseball. They've gotten, they've made baseball smaller. They've cut minor league baseball from communities and they've made the game smaller and less kids. Um, I think there's, there's, they've lost a lot of kids that maybe basketball and football have picked up. And one thing that we get to do in our league is we get to keep the game of baseball pure on the field. Uh, but beyond the fencing, it's a festival, it's a party. We want there to be entertainment that goes beyond baseball itself. I know everybody's probably seen Savannah Bananas. That's what we try to do. Except we don't try to change the game on the field. We just try to have the entertainment in the bleachers. And so doing that allows us to attract kids in that maybe aren't playing baseball right now. But they're coming there because they know that there's going to be a jump house and there's going to be this and that. Um, but then it catches their attention of what's going on on the field. And they see, see a guy playing college baseball and it ignites that passion. Like, maybe, maybe I want to do that. And then they join the Parks and Rec the next season. So I think it will grow. I don't, I wouldn't be here pushing this if I didn't think that it grows the game of baseball and, and helps communities out.
Well, so we know where we stand going into this. I'm not a supporter of beer and wine around kids. So I thought I'd let you know that upfront. When it gets to that point, I'm out. I just don't do it.
Most places we're at, we have a, we have to have a designated beer garden. It's got to be fenced in and be permitted.
Well, I mean, we're not most places, we're Hope Mills. And it's not right for me to stand out here in front of my baseball team and preach to them, no drugs, no drinking and all that. And then I stand up and support it to be put out in front of them. Not only that, but because it's against my moral standards. I just don't do it. I'm sorry. That's all, Madam Mayor.
I believe at this time, the, as far as a final agreement, we're just authorized, uh, would be authorized. What the recommendation is to authorize the town manager to execute a facility use and lease agreement. And then that would have to come back to the board before it would ever be a final approval.
That is great.
So that's what we're asking authorization for, is for him to work through this and then bring back to us something with the suggestions that have been made, something that would be a workable unit contract for the board. So I guess, is there a recommendation from the board?
Does the town attorney get to read that over before we?
Yes, of course.
In other words, he will have to go to his attorney and their attorneys. This is all, will be a legal contract, legal binding contract before we sign it.
We don't need the motion, just need the consensus?
Yeah, just general direction. I mean, there's no point, if the board's going to say no, we absolutely don't want to do this, then there's no reason for us to keep having conversation. But if the board is interested in pursuing this or seeing where it goes, then we just need consensus that we should proceed with some back-and-forth discussion.
So Commissioner Marley, your thoughts?
I'm, I'm in agreeance with that.
Okay, Commissioner Scareola? Okay, Commissioner, um, Mayor Protem?
I agree to move forward.
I think there's some advantages. I'm prepared to go forward.
Commissioner Lee?
I have some hesitation because I'm afraid of the last-minute slide of alcoholic beverages. But as a consensus, I will support it because I always got the right to vote again, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so at this time.
Nothing is binding, other than we're going to have a conversation and bring it back to y'all.
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, the consensus would be to move forward with bringing back something to the board to make a final decision.
Yes, with the possibility of maybe some rough guesstimated number projections. And we can talk about that later. All right, numbers. It's always good to have numbers.
All righty then, thank you so much for coming this evening.
Appreciate it.
And then from here on out, you'll be working with our, our, uh, town manager, interim town manager, and with our Parks and Rec director and probably Parks and Rec directors with the committee too. And then it'll come back to the board for that final decision.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All righty then. All right, next thing on our agenda is pub, we have no public hearings. So the next thing would be public comments. And the first we have for public comments is Charlotte Robinson.
To pass this out?
Sure.
You guys?
Just so you have a copy for, um, the table there, if you're good.
Hey, Ms. Robinson? Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Charlotte Robinson, the owner of the TJ Robinson Life Center. We service veterans, seniors, and at-risk youth. I'm here to speak on the parking sign issue that showed up on the agenda at the last meeting. One would think general professional courtesy would exist between a municipality and a local business. But if that was the case, then you guys would have reached out to me prior to having a meeting about me. We have a youth business that helps to decrease crime and increase economic impact, just like the skateboard presenter presented to you at the last, uh, meeting that got the support from the board and the town manager. But there is an obvious difference in the demographics of the majority of the kids that skate and swim versus the kids that play basketball and football. Nevertheless, Commissioner McCray was correct when she said there's been two incidents in eighteen months um, that happened with cars parked on the street. Let me clear up some of the statements made by the board. Yes, we charge five dollars for parking. We're a private facility with zero support from the town, unlike the skate park, the pool, and possibly the baseball team. We had fifteen thousand dollars of gravel delivered to our facility over a year ago that gave us additional a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. But you wouldn't have known that because you didn't ask. Um, we, and that lot is actually open in the back at every event that we have. Why would it not be open? Mr. Greeley, you made a comment about a safety or preventable accident issue. There was a nineteen, what you see in front of you is a cross for a nineteen-year-old who lost his life on February twenty twenty-three, right in front of our building, not because cars was parked on the road, but instead because of the speed limit that goes from fifty-five to thirty-five, that's ten to twenty feet just before the blind curve at our exit and entrance. Possible or preventable accident? More than likely. So that should be the concern because one preventable accident is way too many. DOT, Department of Transportation, subject matter experts was at my facility today. They came out and they told me that they've received several calls and letters from the town, the attorney, in the last four months. And each time they received that, they made it very clear that this was not, signs were not warranted. So last week, they sent someone out to sit in the curve on the sidewalk and decided signs were not warranted. So because of that, they were so confused as to what was really going on is exactly what the guy did. So he came out himself to see what was really going on and decided that signs are not warranted. And that, their letter will be in your office on, um, tomorrow. Um, I, so, so Mr. Marley and Mr. McLauren, I think it is a good idea to draw up your parking ordinance so that you can be prepared to put signs out in front of the baseball field, the fire department, the walking track, because people park there all the time when the town have major events. Every weekend, um, ho, when you have your Halloween, your Christmas, and your Fourth of July parades. Every weekend, um, when you have your Halloween, your Christmas, and your Fourth of July parades, we have, they, you guys don't have options, but we do. Maybe we wanna listen to Commissioner Leggett when he said play nice, because clearly that implies that you've played nasty all along. This feels like an abuse of power, racial profiling, and harassment. The events that we have have not, have brought in money revenue, big revenue to this town in just this year. So parking signs would deter the patrons. The Robinsons don't care if you put, really don't care if you put them out there, it wouldn't hurt us in the least bit. So to the people that called me in the audience or the people on the TV that called me to let me know what the meeting was about, um, last, last week when you had the meeting, the TJ Robinson Life Center has options. And you guys have options too. You have voting options, and I would suggest you use them and start by putting Mr. Bellflower in that seat right there and maybe moving some other seats around. Now, I have requested documentation from the town which shows me all complaints for the TJ Robinson Life Center from, and all response from all town officials. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Anthony Rebo? No? Okay, so that concludes public comments. Thank you very much. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like moved to some other?
Are we good?
We're good.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Uh, we have no old business, we have no new business, the managers report. Do you have any updates to the managers' report?
Um, just things I'd like to highlight. On this Friday at four PM, we have the groundbreaking for Heritage Park. There is also an event at Lowe's on Friday, October twenty-seventh. It's the Lowe's First Responders Public Safety Day. Remind everybody about the trunk or treat, um, event coming up that we typically do October twenty-seventh as well. In terms of projects, Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers is coming to Hope Mills. We are reviewing their landscaping plans, uh, right now. The Vavoline Oil is open, they're working with, um, the Hope Mills Chamber for a ribbon cutting. We did put the revised, um, option C for the, uh, Sports Complex with, which is the five baseball fields unanimously approved by our board. And, uh, just wanna commend staff for participating in the, um, litter sweep. I do think we picked up about forty-five bags of trash, but that's all I have on my...
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for all the updates too about where we are with projects. And, uh, something too that I found out today strictly by chance is that we have an eggs upcoming to Hope Mills. It was, uh, um, City View, uh, online said that they will be in Traymore Village.
Yes, they're, um, one of the, um, out parcels, well, not out parcels, but the tenants inside the, the building that, um, houses the, um, Domino's.
I figured it's probably where...
And they're working with, uh, the Chamber for Ribbon Cutting as well. So that'll be a new breakfast option for the town of Hope Mills.
It's very popular in South Carolina, so it's, I hope it'll be that same case here. Our reminders of our, our, um, meetings coming up are on, in the agenda. The updates on committee activities. Commissioner Marley, do you have anything for historic preservation?
Yes, ma'am. Since the last update, they've held two meetings. One was August ninth, uh, and the other one was September thirteenth. Uh, the latest meeting, they, um, had discussion of upcoming Festival of Lights and the, um, trunk or treat event that they, uh, that the HPC will be participating in both of those as well. They have a cemetery project going on where they're trying to, um, come up with a plan to, um, clean some, uh, headstones in some of the cemeteries local here. So if anybody's interested in that, I would say to, uh, please reach out to the HPC. Uh, Ms. Reeves is the chairperson for that committee. And also, um, they're working on trying, uh, uh, things, a pretty neat project of, uh, doing a reprint of, uh, Hope Mills Heritage, uh, Eddie Dees's book. Um, I know they're, they're trying to find somebody who has, maybe has a copy of the original manuscript or something like that that they can get ahold of, but, um, they're, they're working diligently on that as well. So they got a lot of, a lot of projects going on and, uh, if anybody's interested, like I said, reach out to the HPC.
Thank you. Commissioner Sceroa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Veterans Affairs Committee, we did not have a quorum, so we'd had no, uh, official business. The Chamber of Commerce, however, um, we're supporting our sister city of Spring Lake. This coming Friday will be the first Friday in Spring Lake from six to nine. And it'll also be a celebration of life of one of our members who had passed away from the UPS store, Steve Milburn. River Mist will be playing and a lot of stuff will be going on. It is on the Hope Mills Chamber's website, the flyer, so if anyone's interested in attending, go check out the Hope Mills website and, uh, you'll see more information.
Thank you. Mayor Prothean?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Hope Mills Primeovers will meet on this Thursday for Parks and Rec. We did discuss, um, the partnership with the baseball team that was presented, presented tonight. They are looking at grants to upgrade our tennis courts and possibly add some pickleball courts as well on March the eighth. From ten AM to two PM, we will be hosting a Hope Mills Senior Expo. Veterans Day Ceremony is November the eleventh at three PM. Basketball registration started on yesterday and they are adding cheer now to the basketball games. And we've had some issues with vandalism, so they've moved up having more security cameras in our Parks and Rec area. And other than what has already been stated in the town manager's update, that is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Cheer to drink?
Cheer.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Uh, Madam Mayor, um, I did not make the last appearance committee, but I sent email, a text, not a text, but a text, and I got no, uh, response back, so I have nothing to, uh, offer the group.
Okay.
Didn't cash it.
What?
I didn't cash it.
Hey.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Um, just a little information, something I would like to mention to this board and to our Parks and Rec program. I would like to see us have a Hope Mills Night Out, where if we had an amphitheater already constructed, be a nice place for it to happen. But Megan, you might hit Maxi upside the head.
Come in tomorrow night, you need to...
Oh, try to get a amphitheater here so we can have a friendly night out with our citizens. May have to go to the golf course. That's okay, we've got room for it. If Drew's got room in his, any checkbook, we got room for this.
Alright.
But where I came from up north in Michigan, that was a monthly thing. Sometimes it would be local bands and celebrities, but there was always a headliner. I mean, I'm not too sure Taylor Swift would wanna come to Hope Mills, but, but just something to think about. I promised some people I would bring that up tonight. And here, I'm here and I support it one hundred percent. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, my mayor's youth leadership will meet again on the, at our second meeting, October eighteenth, and their focus this year is gonna be on gun violence and they're gonna plan a, a gun violence event in the springtime when we have, um, the, actually, the, there'll be a special month for, uh, youth safety. Mid-Carolina Council of Governments, we met and they're, I've got information for our, uh, board in reference to the, the different, the power stream and, and who is responsible of the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments. And I, tomorrow will attend, tomorrow and the third and fourth, I will be in Raleigh at the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and in that is an arm of the aging population where we go and we actually, uh, try to encourage the General Assembly to give funding. And at this particular time, we're actually getting results from the budget process. I also have FAMPO and FAMPO, we met and we do have some updates with the STIP plan. I did put on my social media page the site you can go to to see all that information. Uh, I did attend the mayor's, uh, North Carolina Mayor's Association meeting and there we got information on the railroad, the way that they're working to expand railroad in, in North Carolina, looking at a rail from Raleigh to Fayetteville and also rail, the one they're focusing on right now, Salisbury to Asheville. But there's a lot of information that I've passed out to the board that they can preview. The most important thing I have is for our, our town staff, and that is that the North Carolina League Municipalities actually got a, a portion of the money for state and local physical refer, recovery funds. And that portion, they're targeting toward helping enable projects in towns that have either got ARP money left or they want to do more with their ARP monies. For example, they used, that it could be that they would help write grants, they do it free, if you had an ARP funded item that you were interested in getting additional money to support. And they use things such as pathways, uh, trails, uh, different kinds of recreation opportunities for seniors and adults. But I brought that back and I'll give that to, I'll give it to the board so they can take a look, but I'll give it to our town manager so he can also look at that. And again, that would be something that you would find, uh, that we've got it, there's a site you can go to for that. And the FCE DC did not meet.
Six PM.
Any other, any other information? Do we have any comments from our staff? No comments? At this time, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call a, uh, make a motion to enter a closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three three eighteen eleven, A three Attorney Client Privilege and NCGS one four three three eighteen eleven, A six Personnel.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we'll go to the front conference room and we beg your patience. We'll be back as quickly as possible. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
A motion to move the seal, to, to seal the minutes of the closed session until such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session and further no action was taken.
Have a motion, have a second?
I have a motion.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Um, I would like to take this time to ask the town manager if he would look into the pay scale of our police department. Is there any way you can do this, sir?
That is the direction of the board.
I'd like to add to that. I think we should just review the pay scale of the whole entire town staff.
Thank you.
You like that better?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty, any, any other comments? Okay. Alright, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We appreciate everyone being here and our next meeting is October eighteenth? Sixteenth, October sixteenth, sorry.